The New Hanover County Board of Education to order, if you would please stamp the invocation, pledge allegiance and the posting of colors.
I have ice. Please. Come.
We will now have our invocation. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to gather here tonight. We're truly fortunate and blessed to be able to work in the lives of our young people, be with those teachers, administrators, all in our classrooms that also have this opportunity. May God ever mind but of the needs of others, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose starships and bright stars through the perilous fight? Were the round lights we watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Oh, the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I go, oh, earth, earth. Well, discussion of birth is on. I have space. Oh, earth, earth.
Everyone may be seated.
Go Mary C.
At this time, I'd like to have the instructor, Deborah Jones, from Mary C. Williams, if you would please, introduce our singers tonight and then pass the microphone around and let them tell us what grade they're in. I think we know what school they represent.
I'm Debbie Jones. I am the music specialist at Mary C. Williams, starting my, or in the middle of my 14th year there.
Okay, I'm Williams, and I'm in fourth grade.
Jenna Norris, fifth grade.
Rebecca Powell, fourth grade.
Matthew Pitt, fifth grade.
Natalie Faircloth, fourth grade.
Ashlyn Todd, fourth grade.
Madison Pace, fifth grade.
David Colley, fifth grade.
Haley Ramsey, fifth grade.
I'm Briano Elakun. I am in fourth grade.
Kayla Carroll, I am in fourth grade.
Brittany Finger, fifth grade.
Chloe Buck, fifth grade.
Lonnie Rodriguez, fifth grade.
Anna Selimi, fifth grade.
My name's Alimo Day Butler, and I'm in the fourth grade.
Amelia Faro, fifth grade.
Angel Mendez, fifth grade.
Thank you very much for being here. I'd also like the cadets of John T. Hoggard High School to come back up, and if you would please, take the mic, introduce yourselves, tell us your rank and what grade you're in.
I'm Cadet Sora Ford. I'm a lieutenant J.G. at Hoggard High School, and I'm a senior.
I'm Cadet Sora Roberts. I am senior chief petty officer, and I'm a senior at John T. Hoggard High School.
I'm Cadet Jobinia. I'm a semin apprentice at John T. Hoggard freshman.
I'm a semin apprentice. I'm a sophomore at John T. Hoggard High School, and I'm a semin apprentice.
Thank you very much. Don't know if they were able to make it tonight, but the principal of Hoggard High School, I don't know if Dr. Sullivan's here, but we appreciate what he's doing also. The instructors, Roderick Schaefer and Richard Wishardo, appreciate the work they're doing there. And then at Mary C. Williams Elementary School, Amy Conklin is the principal. And then also, you met the Debbie Jones, the music instructor. We appreciate both schools and what you did here tonight. Ms. Adams, if you would, call the roll, please.
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Tammy J. Cobal.
Here.
Lisa Eastep.
Here.
Derek G. Hickey.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Thank you. This time, item two is approval of the agenda. I think we might have some additions or deletions.
Mr. Chair, strategic plan, I'd like to make that a discussion instead of a business item.
Is that all?
That's the only one that I have.
I move that we approve the agenda as stated.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more. I thought I had asked to put the partnership with the Hill School on the agenda.
The, there were some emails back and forth, and that's why prompted me to send the email I sent was that, once the agenda's posted, we could not change it after that point, but it could be added tonight.
Okay.
So, but then, I also put a little note on there that, if we're going to make changes or whatever, which I certainly have no problem doing, but just once it's posted, and that's at noon on Thursday, is that right, Ms. Adams?
I would say it's at two.
What, two o'clock on Thursday, then, once it's posted to the public, we really can't add or change anything, except right now. We could have a discussion, I don't know if staff has had time to prepare anything, because I know that, in one of the emails, I think Dr. Markley had stated that the attorney involved in something would be back in November.
Correct.
And really wanted to put it off till then.
And have some discussion. I mean, I brought the, what materials we've had from previous board meetings with me in anticipation.
Well, I think we've had this discussion before as a board. I don't know that anything has changed. I would just like to put it on the agenda. I mean, I think we waited, at least in my estimation, I was in favor the last time it came before the board, and we've waited, I guess about a year now. We have a new board. We've had several, more than several, special education, well, lawsuits for lack of a better word. And I've spoken to parents who really have felt pretty strongly about having their children have the opportunity to have this partnership, and that's why I think it's important that, as a beginning of the school year, that we talk about this now and actually get this in place. So, I would like to just put it on the agenda tonight. There's no-
Second. For discussion?
Well, I'd like it to be an action item. I would like to direct staff to enter into discussions with the Hill School on a possible partnership. Are we able to do that?
Well, of course, as a former board attorney used to say, the board can kind of do what they want to do, but I would like to think that we make sure we have all information that would be available to us, ramifications of a type of agreement that we would enter into. I think it's certainly an area of interest. I just wanted, my recommendation would be wait, now, this attorney that you're talking about, would be available when? Would it be at our next board meeting?
She's to do back in to wrap up the two proceedings she did for us, and we were going to sit down and have a discussion about Hill School. We can have a discussion tonight. We've had, our specialized director is here tonight, and we can have some discussion, and at the end of that discussion, we can talk about further steps.
Well, that'd be fine. We can have this discussion, but I'd like, after this discussion, if it's the will of the board, to try to find ways to make a partnership work, rather than to look for ways why it doesn't work, to sort of change the focus on, you know, because again, we can make things work if we are so inclined in the majority of the time, and all we're asking is to do something that's in the best interest of our children with special needs.
Well, and I think we need to make the effort to reach out, and that has not been done, and that's what I would, I'm not saying sign anything between now and then, I'm saying we start, we contact Don Hodges, and we start the ball rolling now, rather than waiting for a lawyer to get back. I don't think that's in the best interest of the students.
Well, I just want to make sure we clearly understand the legal ramifications of anything that we enter into here tonight, is all I'm saying. And that's why, when I saw the email about the attorney being out of town, I was thinking it would be better to wait, because this is the person that's handling those things. But I'm not opposed to any kind of a discussion we want to have tonight. I would just caution us on the legalities, and I'm sure Mr. Bullard can also address that. So, we'll add that-
Is there a second to my motion? Because he made an amendment to my note motion, but I don't know if there was a second on my motion.
It was not. It was not. So, we'll just go ahead and add, where would it be? The R?
New business?
New business, under R.
You got two places. You can start it as information, under section seven, or put it as R, as new business, at the end.
Let's do it at the end.
Okay, let's make it R at the end, then.
All right. During that time, has anybody got any copies of materials from the previous boards? Is the copy you're running? Is the copy available?
We had actually gotten that before, the old information.
So, we're going to take, under new business, item A will be for discussion tonight, and then we're going to add Hill School discussion as item R.
Correct.
Anything else that, Dr. Hickey, that was your motion then, to add that?
Sir, yes, sir.
So, if you want to make the motion that-
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kavanaugh, I want to take yours as a second, how's that?
Okay, well, she's seconding it, but I'm more than happy to second it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All those, favor please say aye. Aye. Posed. It is approved. Approval of the, item three, approval of the minutes, item A, our work session from September the 17th, 2013. Motion to approve those.
Second.
All those, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. It is approved. Item four, recognition of achievement.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, it is our honor to recognize three outstanding New Hanover High School students for their success at the 2013 Kenneth Behring National History Day Contest. After their Manhattan Project won at local, regional, and state levels, James Murray, Andrew Storkhost, and Gunner Schwarzlander traveled to Washington, D.C. for the national competition. In the final round of judging, these three Lyceum Academy students ranked as the top senior exhibit representing North Carolina, and they ranked 11th overall in the nation. So, before we recognize these students, I'd also like to recognize their social studies teacher, Mr. Justin Fichetti, if he's here, and the Lyceum Program Director, Mr. Gordon Massengill, and of course, the principal at New Hanover High School, Mr. Todd Finn. So, to our students, as I say your name, please come forward to accept your award. James Murray.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
And last but not least, Gunner Schwarzlander. We're very proud of our Wildcats. Congratulations, gentlemen. And now, Mr. Hayes, our next award recognition is for two Riceboro Elementary students whose artwork is receiving statewide honors. Alex Sider will have her painting displayed in a permanent statewide art exhibit sponsored by the North Carolina Art Education Association. This permanent exhibit will be on display at the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. I would like to take this opportunity to briefly recognize Alexandra's family, Mr. and Mrs. Edward Sider, if you're here, and her teacher, Ms. Bronwyn Guthrie. Would you please stand? Alex, please come forward. We're so proud of you. Congratulations. We have one more if she wants to stay. Okay? Our next Riceboro student to receive statewide honors is Heidi Casares Manilla. Heidi is one of only six winners in the annual Professional Educators of North Carolina Young Artist Competition. And I'd also like to recognize Heidi's parents, Mr. Casares Montiel, and her mom, Mrs. Manilia Alvarez, and her teacher, Ms. Bronwyn Guthrie. Heidi, please come forward as your family stands. So, we want to congratulate these young ladies, their teacher, Ms. Bonnie Hall, principal of Riceboro Elementary, and these student artists have been competition winners for the past three years. So, go to class. Thank you, ladies, and congratulations.
Dr. Markley, in the future, would it be possible to have a picture of their artwork up on the screen for everybody to see?
Yes, we can. That goes with our P.I.O. for the last meeting, before we switch over here.
Thank you, Ms. Kavanaugh. And finally, tonight, we will recognize three schools for achieving statewide honor for being Title I reward schools. This is a very prestigious award, everyone, and those three schools are Bradley Creek Elementary, College Park Elementary, and Pine Valley Elementary. In order to receive this designation from the state, the schools had to earn test scores in the highest 10% of all Title I schools in the state, with students in all racial and ethnic groups performing well on state end-of-year tests. So, this is a very high honor for our three schools. So, tonight, our principals will come forth to be recognized by our board for these outstanding recognitions. So, when I call your name, would you please come forward? For our outstanding Bradley Creek Elementary School, our principal, Ms. Jane Keiker. Ms. Keiker is one of our newer principals, and she's doing a great job. Oh, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. And for the second year in a row, our amazing College Park Elementary School, Ms. Maria Green. And finally, from Pine Valley Elementary School, Ms. Rebecca Higgins-Offgren. We applaud our outstanding Title I schools, congratulate you again on achieving this outstanding recognition from the state of North Carolina. Thank you all, and that concludes our recognition ceremony.
Next item on the agenda, item five, is our call to the audience. We had no one sign up, so we'll move to item six, administrative personnel. Dr. Markley.
No administrative personnel this evening.
Item seven, any information items?
No general information items.
Item eight, under superintendent's report, under item A, Young Women's Leadership Network.
As you know, Georgia Miller, who's the chancellor's wife at UNCW, has approached us about a potential partnership for a potential new school. Several of our board members sat to an informal presentation at the chancellor's house about a month ago, and we're making some progress on that, and I want to just do a little quick little review of where we are with that process. Next, please. What they're proposing is a partnership that would have a school for young ladies, grade six through 12, limited to 75 students per grade, starting with sixth grade, like we have at Virgo, and building out grade by grade, with class size is limited to about 25. Focus on college readiness, with three framing values, which would be leadership, college success, and healthy life skills. It's modeled after the Young Women's Leadership Academy of East Harlem, which has been replicated now to about a dozen schools to as far away as Texas. And it operates, would operate as a school of choice. Next one, please. The partnership would be with the Wilmington Leadership Academy for Young Women, would be a public partner, private, partnership, between the board and the Board of the Young Women's Leading, Inc. The chairman of the Board of Education would serve as a district representative on that board, and the board and superintendent will work together to appoint several members to an advisory board, and the YWL will provide a variety of services and program enhancements to support this school. So far, as I said, we've had a couple of, they've had a couple of informal meetings. They've invited myself and other members that currently have in the bank $500,000 and anticipate having $2 million by the October-November timeframe. They're planning several visits to New York, several visits, one to New York, which will include Chairman Hayes will be on that visit, Ms. Eastep will be on that visit, the mayor of Wilmington, Bill Stafford, Ben David, and then several representatives from UNCW. Next. What they'd like to do is finalize a partnership between us and them in the December timeframe. There is, sent to you today was sort of a draft memorandum to begin that process. I'd ask that you look it over. It's provided today strictly as information for further discussion moving forward. They are committed, next slide, they are committed to us partnering with us in December, having a principal in place by July, and then having a full planning year, and their foundation would actually pick up the cost associated with that planning year to include the principal salary with an opening in the following year. So, 2014, we would hire the principal, the following year, 2015, is when the anticipated opening of the school would happen. Couple of things that have to happen, we have to look at this partnership and decide if we want to move forward with this, and also have to select a location for potential school. So, the memorandum really gives a full detailed explanation of what that relationship would be. As I said, it's not a voting item tonight, it's simply presented for discussion. We have two board members who will be attending that visit. Their foundation will be paying for the expenses for that, for that trip, is my understanding. That'll take place here in the next several weeks, and then we can decide if we want to continue and move forward with this partnership. Chairman, anything you'd like to add to that, since you've sat in on a couple of those meetings?
Well, I would just like to say that the initial visit that we had, let's see, Mrs. Nichols was there, and Mrs. Eastep, and myself, and you met with the, I don't remember all the names right now, but anyway, with their group, and we all, while we were there, they went over our packet of information that we have, and we brought packets back for the full board, and in reviewing this, I'm very impressed with what I have seen as far as the, the success rate that they have in the schools they have now in New York, those in Texas, and located in other places. I think it's something that I, as a board member, certainly have strong interest in, because I think it would be a benefit, and then if you look at the statistics of the schools that they now have in existence, the graduation rates, the grade point averages, those that are going on to college, plus the fact that this foundation would also help these young ladies in that endeavor, I was just very impressed with it. Ms. Nichols, anything you'd like to add, or Ms. Eastep, because y'all were there, and I just found it very impressive.
I'm delighted to know that you're going to get to go and see firsthand the program, and it is exciting, and I think it's something, if we can find the place.
And a lot of the information in your packet is geared with the New York information. Where Wilmington, it would look different here in Wilmington than it would in New York, just like the Texas model. The Texas location looks slightly different than the New York location. So, when you look at the memorandum, and you look at the information in your packet, you'll find some differences between those two.
Ms. Eastep, anything you'd like to add?
Just that, same thing, I was very impressed with the organization and the desire of this, of this group to, you know, to try to put this in place, and I do believe that they do have a school in mind in Texas that would be more the model for the Wilmington school, but-
It's the Ann Richard School in Texas.
And I would like to, another thing I'm interested in is to see, you know, they do have such great numbers, how we can replicate that in our other schools, like what can we do to kind of roll that out into our traditional schools as well?
Well, I have, I have a concern, I'm sorry, Dr. Hickey.
I just have two, two things, and I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to read the white paper that was, was in this packet.
The MOU?
No, the white paper that was in the original packet. This basically focused on the studies that strongly suggest single gender settings are more beneficial for boys. In fact, this, this entire white paper basically focused on that, and, you know, although I think it's a great idea for girls, you know, we, we have quite frequently hearings, expulsion hearings and things of that nature, that are predominantly for boys, and some of the situations that we've, we've seen recently, how do we get those boys out of those negative situations? So, I would, I would be more in favor of something that would focus more on, on the male gender. The other thing too, that I had was, and I don't know if this is necessarily an issue with, with Title IX, is that if we provide a single-sex school, don't we have to provide it for, you know, the opposite sex? In other words, wouldn't we have to open it up? Isn't that part of the Title IX regulation?
You can do gender-specific school. In fact, Raleigh is opening up two separate academies this year that are gender, gender-based schools.
But if we do one, if we do one for boys or girls, per se, then we'd also have to provide one for the other, for the other sex, because otherwise it's discriminatory. According to, according to this information that, that we were given by this organization.
As a choice program, though, the rules are a little different. This is a program where you would choose to go to, not one that I'm forcing only girls to go into particularly a program.
Well, it, it basically said that, that applied to public schools, it doesn't necessarily apply to private schools, so-
And I would be in favor of it at some point, if there's an organization that wants to partner with us for an all-boys school. I think they're, they both have merit, and if we can make this work with, with this school, then maybe there's a comparable model for, for young men.
And that's certainly a question that we can ask when we're up in New York, why they decided, the original school decided to go with the, with young women as opposed to young men, but they do have several schools, and it's, it's women. So, you know, the, the model is out there, and the, the organization is already there for this type of school.
Well, again, you know, we just, you know, we've had so much discussion about, and like I said, we've had- and like I said, we've had expulsion hearings and situations that are predominantly male. There's, there's some serious gang activity that's taking place in the community. I think this is a great opportunity to focus on the male gender versus the female. And, you know, although I think this is great, I would, I personally would support it if it were for the male gender, to be quite frank.
Well, I think you make some good points, and I think there are five of those schools, Ms. E Step, in New York. There are, there are five, and somehow legally, they're in existence, they're in other states, and also in Texas, and I...
In Maryland.
Yeah, Maryland, and I certainly, I think Baltimore, but, but I certainly wouldn't want to miss the opportunity to work with a local group that wants to work with us, because I think as Dr. Markley's saying, that is certainly, I think it would be beneficial also if a group would like to work with us as far as a, as a male school. I think it'd be great.
But the focus of this foundation is specifically for, for young ladies.
Right. Well, they're, they're providing the seed money, correct? What are, what are the financial responsibilities going forward?
There's a lot, a little more specifically in the MOU, but in terms of basically, the basic education piece, principal teachers is a school function, the support piece becomes the responsibility of the foundation. Except they'll pay that principal salary the first year, which, which, and they'll pay for another person as well as part of that startup. And then there's some counseling pieces along with that, that they'll pick up and go along with the school system as well.
From my understanding from all, excuse me, that I've read, other than that white paper, that girls seem to blossom whenever they are in a gender-specific school because they don't feel intimidated by the young men, and especially in their science and math grades. From what I understand, they significantly improve in a single-gender school.
Well, but according to this white paper, not as much as the boys do.
And we also, I mean, if you, if you talk to our middle school principals, while we spend a lot of time dealing with expulsion at the high school for, for young men, there are issues with gangs and, and young ladies at, at our middle schools as well.
Well, I have two comments, I, actually, three comments, I guess. One's just, I flipped through this, and it looks like a great program, and I think this is a good opportunity, and we certainly should look into it. My two cautionary comments echo the ones that have already been mentioned. Number one is cost. You know, 25 students per class, those are small class sizes. You know, at the end of the day, will be helpful to me as a board member would be to look at, okay, this is what it's going to cost the system to pursue this, versus what it would cost the system to educate these students if we just kept them in a traditional school.
Sure.
Because again, it's, it's nice to partner with foundations, and it's nice that they're very excited, and they're going to bring some support services with them. But at the end of the day, we're going to, if it's a major expense, we're going to be asking the taxpayers to cover that in perpetuity. Second comment goes along with Ms. E Step's, sorry, Ms. Colville's comments. We on this board have spoken about gender-specific schools for a while, and I think most of the board is in favor of it for the reasons mentioned. Having said that, all the data I've seen since at least 2003 and going forward shows higher graduation rates among women, shows higher college graduation rates among women as well. What does the district's demographic show? Is it a parallel that? Do we have more women graduating than men? Do we know?
If you look at your graduation rates, it's going to be generally slightly, the female will be higher, and you would break it down by subgroups, that generally holds true for the subgroups as well.
So, again, it's a sort of piggyback off Ms. Colville. I would support doing this, but I think if, if we're going to go ahead and do this, it would be nice if maybe we could roll out a, you know...
Partner school.
A partner school for, for boys. Because I think as, again, I didn't read that white paper, but I've read other papers that do demonstrate the benefits of single gender education, particularly in with boys. And I went to an all-boys high school, sort of full disclosure, and...
Please don't hold that against.
It was boring, but we, but we spent our time doing, you know, studying, with much else to do, studying and sports, kept your nose clean. So, a big proponent of single gender, but we have to look at the, the numbers, what it's going to cost, and, and I would be in favor of pursuing something for boys as well, because that's the demographic, at least statistically, nationally and locally, that is behind girls.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Dr. Markley. Item nine, under consensus items, item A, personnel, appendix A, Dr. Welmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Yes, I'd like for Dr. Welmers, if he will, review with the full board the exit process for retirees as well as those that are resigning.
The, anytime someone decides to resign or retire from the system, there's actually kind of two forms that we follow. One is where they give a reason, that's a state form, as to why they're, they're retiring, they're resigning, they're taking leave, or whatever that would, but we follow that up with an online survey, an exit survey, to see if they, you know, will list the reasons for why. Everything to, were things going well for them at work? Are there things we can do to help them? Things like that. So we do a follow-up with them, with every employee when they leave for that.
Thank you, Dr. Welmers.
Thank you.
One of the things, Mr., Dr. Welmers, sorry. Lisa had asked you, and you had sent an email, but just a little bit of background, there's quite a few supplemental service resource manager positions. I think it'd just be beneficial for all of us to hear as a board, unless you've already seen it, why we have so many new positions.
Some of them are recurring positions, they're being refilled, so there are folks coming back, but I think there's 24 of those positions. Ms. Pelzy, Beckham, would you like to describe that as it's an instruction? She'd better that than I am.
Thank you, Dr. Welmers. Ms. E Step did ask the question about the, the numbers, and it is 24 that we're hiring for our Title I schools. This is our supplemental after-school program, and in order for the program to run, we have to have people assigned to take care of duties, like ensuring the students get on the bus to go home in the afternoon, to ensure they have their snacks, to ensuring that they have their materials ran off. Instead of asking the staff to do those things on top of their jobs for the day for the students, we hired managers to do that. And that's what the question was about, are these recurring? Some of them are, and some of them are new hires.
And these are year-to-year positions.
Hourly...
Does the funding come from Title I funding?
Yes, yes.
And this is the money that we formally paid to private providers for us to school?
And if you remember, right.
Had our in-house program.
And it's requirement under No Child Left Behind, that we had to provide supplemental services to our Title I schools. And so therefore, Dr. Hickey even brought up when we were paying out to vendors, why don't we have our own program?
We were paying an outrageous fee for a very little service, so, and that's why I asked, because when I heard this, I said, okay, well, that, that actually makes sense. These are not actual tutors, though, these are people who are going to facilitate the process, so rather than making the teachers work overtime hours, these people will be providing snacks and...
And making sure the students get on their buses, making sure that materials teachers need to use with the students in the after-school program are available, taking like, like I said, taking that part of the job off of them, since they are working all day. The teachers are the ones who are actually doing the tutoring. But they have people there to support all the materials that they need to provide in that after-school program, and that is a requirement.
You have a question?
And Dr. Hickey's right, there were only 500 kids that were served under the old, the way the state required us to do it, and we're serving 1,000 kids for 90 hours versus 30 that the supplemental vendors were providing.
Any other, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It's approved. Item B, change of school assignments, appendix B, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board recommend approval for this routine change of assignment to a release to another school district because the parent is employed by that school district.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item 10, under Old Business, item A, policies for second reading, Ms. Nichols.
This is policy 6082, Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct, and that comes from the Human Resources Department. I'll ask Dr. Welmers if he will review it for us.
Thank you. This is, the Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct has been a policy with the school system for many years. We made a change to Employee Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct, and we included in there that basically employees shall not enter into a romantic relationship, nor shall they directly or indirectly use their supervisory position to keep someone from reporting or, or giving information concerning concerns they would have within the system. The, the policy also adds standards of professional conduct that defines what happens if someone violates the, this policy. So those were the two major changes.
Thank you, Dr. Welmers. Okay, so I ask that we approve it tonight?
Move for approval.
Second. Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Under item 11, under New Business, we'll have item A, Strategic Plan Development Services, a discussion there, Dr. Markley.
This item grew out of our summer retreats, where we had talked about revising and updating our strategic plan. But we're also in the middle of redoing our budget committee. I need some direction from the board, do we want to continue with this process or postpone this process until, till later in the year? We had two, we had two local companies that submitted proposals. I mean, I'm ready to make a recommendation on one of them this evening if we want to move forward, but I won't, I've been just looking for some feedback. It'll be, it'll be a fairly lengthy and involved process, I mean, if you saw both the proposals.
Excuse me, how long do we expect it to take? Because if we're going to have a bond referendum, that's going to take quite a bit of our time. So are we hoping to have this before the bond referendum, or...
The timeline for this and the original proposal, the one that I was going to recommend, would start in October and, and before, about the end of the school year. So, and, and that's another consideration with the bond, is this something that we want to postpone until we get to the, any potential bond process?
It takes a great deal of time to go out and to educate the public and community organizations regarding bond referendums. And I'd hate to see us start, start and, and then just flounder around, because we were needed more importantly to go out and evangelize.
Dr. Hickey, this one came out of our retreat, and I didn't want to at least give you an opportunity to get some feedback before we, we may, may move forward or table it for a while.
I agree. I think we need to get the budget process going, and certainly the bond referendum, and then that should guide us with our strategic plan as well.
I think Ms. Kavanaugh makes some very good points, and I think with the, setting up the finance committee, I think would help also in guiding what we're going to do in the strategic plan. But if we're going to be diverted as far as focus, I would rather really focus in on the upcoming bond proposal.
I think it's much more important at this time, because we, we've gone through the strategic plan, we have the elements of that. We are talking about making some changes, but I think we've got a good strategic plan to begin with, as long as we go ahead with the bond referendum.
I agree.
And I think it would change with the bond, if the bond is passed, wouldn't that change our plan to some extent? If the bond is passed, wouldn't that change our plan to some extent?
Well, you're right, either way, passed or failed, then it, it could certainly affect...
I think everyone makes excellent points, and I move that we table this with further study.
Second.
All right, I'll send a letter to both companies, thanking them, and tell them we're just going to wait until...
We'll get back to you.
There might be opposition, wait a minute, we've got to vote. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're, we're going to...
I thought I was reading the will of the board, Mr. Hickey.
Excuse me. Let's see, item B, updates to the membership of 2013-14 Advisory Council for exceptional students, appendix E, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We asked that you, we brought this to you before, and we need to revise it because one member has resigned, and we're adding a replacement member and also an alternate, because we do expect another to, to not be able to participate. And this is due to the fact that their schedules don't allow them to participate and what have you. So we were asking you to approve these alternate members, and just approve this for us at this time.
Move for approval. Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're approved, thank you. Item C, transit easement agreement with Cape Fear Public Transportation Authority at Hogarth High School, appendix F, Mr. Hens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Board members should have received some maps today from Ms. Adams that reflect, will fully reflect what is going to transpire with the easement, and we would request that the easement be approved.
Move for approval.
Second.
I think we had some questions.
I just want to see the blown-up photos of Dr. Hickey.
Well, this is the other one, this is the...
That's...
Okay.
Yeah, this is public transportation. Well, I think, you know, I'd spoken to several board members, and we had some concerns, particularly about the contract. You know, and this is sort of why I had suggested in emails that we, atypical things like this, like new contracts and agreements maybe come before us in a work session. So as an example, this is going to be right outside a high school. So is this enclosure going to be opaque? Is it going to be a good place for kids to hide and do things we don't want them to do? If it's vandalized, is there anywhere in the contract, because I didn't see it, which states how much time they have to correct if it's, you know, if it's vandalized, if they, if people graffiti it and we contact them? Do they have a week to repair it, two weeks, they have a month? Can it stay in front of the school in a vandalized place as long as they want? I'm not familiar with the public transportation authority's shelters, but do they plan to put advertising in them? And if they plan to put advertising in front of a school, are we going to have a say of what kind of advertising? We may not wish to have Victoria's Secret models' pictures in front of the school. Likewise, since it's our property, will we be receiving some reimbursement if they choose to do advertising? So, these are just some of the things that popped in my head. I think it probably is a good idea to have a structure, particularly if our students use the bus, I don't know what the demographics of usage are, but, you know, I had enough concerns that I didn't want to just approve this contract as written.
Well, I also have questions. There, there's currently a bus stop right in front of the senior center, is there not? I'm, I'm curious as to know why they're wanting to put another bus stop?
There are actually two. There's one in front of Hogarth and one to the side.
Okay.
So we're going to put another one?
On the side, on 41st Street.
This is on 41st Street. This is not in front of Hogarth, it is down towards where the softball fields are.
Oh, down 41st.
Yes, down 41st.
A little bit beyond the, beyond the parking lot on 41st Street.
I assume it's where the current bus stop is.
Well, there's one, there's one right in front of the, the entrance to Hogarth, and I'm assuming that's where it is. Is that not, is there another one farther down?
This is on 41st Street.
The one on 41st Street.
It's beyond the entrance to the parking lot.
Okay, so there's two of them on 41st Street?
I doubt it.
Because the, the, the bus stop on 41st Street is right when you turn on 41st, it's right there.
There's, there's, I was down there the other day, and it, it was down by the, at the very back end of Hogarth, down where the softball field is.
That must be a second one.
The map that you have shows it in this location here.
Okay, so that must be a second one.
It's on down further, further down.
It's almost off.
Did I miss the map?
It was in the packet.
It was? Oh, okay. I missed it.
Well, would that answer you, part of your concerns, Dr. Hickey, as far as the appearance of it, it wouldn't be in front of the school, but...
Well, it's going to be on school property, I think, you know, this is a boilerplate easement, I suppose, that they just give to everyone they're requesting an easement from. But, you know, what we have to do, of course, is work in the, what's the best interest of New Hanover County schools? And so, you know, what's in the best interest of New Hanover County schools is to, for us to determine what our property looks like. And so I'd like to see in any contract that they had so much time to correct problems with their structures after being notified. That's sort of standard things that are in contracts. I'd also, again, I don't know if they advertise, but if they do advertise, I'd like to have some control over what kind of advertisements they put in front of the school. Again, I don't know that we want lingerie models, I don't know that we want beer commercials, just fairly simple things. And lastly, if they're going to advertise, and this just things, there could be other problems, and I leave it up to Mr. Bullard to think of them, but if there's going to be advertising, do we get paid for it? Because it's our property. If they put up a billboard, someone put up a billboard on New Hanover County school property, we would expect some remuneration.
Do we know if they advertise in any of their other...
Not certain, but we can certainly check, and as it's written now, we would get no remuneration at all.
Well, Dr. Hickey makes a good point about the upkeep, because it, I'm, I'm looking at this map, and it looks like it's by the tennis courts, is that correct? Okay.
It appears, it appears that's where it is.
Okay, so I guess they're moving the stop a little bit farther down, which is great, because it makes it a pain when you're trying to get into Hogarth. But the upkeep would be, I mean, that, that's right next, and the fence is right next to the sidewalk, so who would, who would, you know, if there were a problem, you know, what kind of, of structure is it going to be? Is it going to be clear? And, and, you know, what happens if it gets damaged? What, what is the turnaround? And, and, you know, what happens if it gets damaged? What it, what is the turnaround time for fixing it?
It's about an eighteen-foot slab of concrete with their structure and placed on it is the way that, the way the description is written now. And they're, they're responsible for the cleanup of that particular area. We would still be responsible for the area surrounding it, which we're responsible for now. So, that, that's the way it's written. It's not, um, a great deal of detail in the, in the agreement, as Dr. Hickey points out.
Well, if you would like, we could, uh, I don't think a month's going to make that much difference in this thing. We could table this, bring it back.
Concerned, do that.
Get answers to these questions, and maybe any other concerns we have. If you think of something, we could get those to Mr. Hens, and then get answers from those from the, uh, from that group, uh, and then we can address it at our next meeting. Would that be the will of the board?
So advertising, repair, turnaround?
Well, and I'd like to know too, that, um, it's also still disability accessible with the move of location.
ADA accessible?
Yeah.
They would have to by law, but I would just say we, we would not permit any kind of advertising, and that way we would never have to look at, you know, make exceptions or. Yeah, because the money would not be that much.
They'll be fine. I just, you know, these are just things that popped in my head when I read the contract.
But that, that's a very good point, because you're just not, they may not be advertising now, but tomorrow they may decide they need to, so.
Was it the will of the board that there be none, or that they be controlled?
No advertising.
Well, we wouldn't mind knowing what the possibilities might be, because if we're gonna, we might need the money, the way things are going.
How much could you get for the headache of determining?
In DC, they get a, a hundred dollars a month per advertisement on their, uh, bus stops. So they got three ads. They, the, the bus company's getting three hundred dollars a month off of it.
But not the property owners. Of course, they probably own the.
Well, in that case, they put them in, they're in the rider, they're in the public rider way. They're not all.
Right, so they would not.
Use that money to offset our losses at our cafeterias.
Did Ms. Adams get a, a list of the different questions that were brought up, or do we need to forward a list to you?
Yes, sir.
Maybe email us that list, and then we can look at them as a board, then if something else you'd like to add to it, we'll go back to Ms. Adams, then we get those to Mr. Hens. Who made the motion? You just wanted to draw the motion, and we'll.
I didn't make the motion. I did not make the motion.
Mr. Higgins make the motion?
Would you just like to withdraw your motion, Ms. Higgins, and we'll just table it for now?
I will. I don't see a problem with it, but I'll withdraw it.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll get the answers to those questions, and then we'll have it back on our agenda, uh, at, uh, our November meeting. Uh, item D, public utility easement agreement with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority at Eaton Elementary School. Appendix G, Mr. Hens.
This is the one that the maps were at, that Ms. Adams should have, uh, forwarded to the board. Um, this is an easement along our property lines, uh, for the installation of water lines along Eaton and, uh, Gordon Road and, uh, the Ogden Park Road, adjacent to Eaton Elementary School.
Move for approval?
Second.
Because I know there were some concerns about some work taking place, but that had nothing to do with what we're being asked to approve tonight. It was some other, well, I know they're paving Gordon Road and, and doing some other work there.
That's correct. It's DOT work plus the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority work in the existing, uh, utility right of way.
I, I know that initially I had a concern because the description that was in the contract was, was not specific. The way you read it, they could have run the easement anywhere as they, they wanted to, because it made a reference. Apparently, there was a map someplace. We didn't have that map. And it talked about Thirty-Six Acre Track, which is what the track for Eaton was, which meant they could run the easement anywhere as they, they pleased. But, uh, Mr. Hens has now pointed out that there was a map and that it runs along the edge of the access road to, uh, Ogden Park, and most of it's in the access road's right of way, that, what, maybe a foot or two, they were coming over into our property.
I'm, I'm not certain exactly how much they took.
Didn't look like a whole lot.
It's not a lot.
What, what kind of, um, structure, what, what exactly?
Water lines.
Just water lines?
Well, I looked at the maps as well, and, uh, part of my real, I'm actually more concerned with this one than the last one. And, uh, the, the reason I'm more concerned with this one is that, uh, it's a very restrictive easement they're asking for. This easement prohibits us from essentially using this property for any purpose except having grass or weeds growing. You know, in light of our school's security issues, we don't plan on putting a fence or shrubs or some type of, uh, mechanism to retain people from driving directly onto the Eaton campus today. But we might, in the future, decide that that's something we want to pursue. Under this easement agreement, we are prohibited from putting any types of fencing or shrubbery or anything. This easement agreement essentially just gives Cape Fear Public Utility Authority this property. I mean, it's basically their property, and, you know, we can put some grass on top of it if we want. Uh, so this isn't really an easement agreement, and, you know, it's my contention that removable items like fences, I mean, you know, we're not going to put a building on this property, but, uh, but removable items like fences or shrubs that don't go that deep into the ground, that could have legitimate uses for security purposes, should be allowed, well, under any easement, but certainly under an easement for our school system. And so what I would like is to, again, table this one, speak to Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, and actually ask them to go back and amend their previous easement that runs in front of Eaton Elementary, to allow us, should we want to, because now's the time to ask, because they're asking us for a piece of our property, so now's the time for us to ask them. We would like the right to put certain structures that, which don't interfere with their easement, in the easements if we wish. Again, like fencing, like shrubbery. And secondly, I, I know that, actually, I don't, I didn't know until today, the property in front of Eaton is quite torn up for anyone who's been by there recently. I think Mr. Hens probably drove by today to take a look at it, I would imagine. And I know they said that they plan on remediating it and bringing the place back to what it looked like prior to their work. But generally, they only sprinkle grass seed when they're done. Is that agreed upon?
We'll follow up on this one.
Yeah, so there were, there were mounds of dirt, and, uh, it, it wasn't leveled. They dug things up and throw mounds of dirt all over the place, and then sprinkled a little bit of cheap grass seed on it. Now, I know now that there's an interest in it, they may go back and do what they should have done in the first place, but I suspect that was how they were planning on leaving our property, which the board in two thousand had graciously, uh, granted them an easement. So, uh, we might have to ask our easement partner if they, that's how they intend to.
We'll, we'll check. Once their work is complete, and it's not complete yet, but once it's complete, we'll see how the finished product turns out, and then we'll.
But they generally will put grass seed on if they think they've got more work to do.
They may have just done that to stabilize it while they complete the work, and then hopefully they would have come back with something a little more robust than that. But we will follow up on it to make sure that, uh, that the reclamation of the property is done appropriately after, after they're finished with their work.
Well, that's easement. Uh, how close is it to the building? I mean, it's, uh.
It's at the edge of the property line.
Yeah. Over the, the road that goes, um.
It's on Gordon, at the edge of Gordon Road, at the edge of.
It's, if, if you look at the, the drawing, it's hard to imagine they're even on any of our property. I mean.
Well, it's not so far over there.
Well, but the thing is, if you look at it, the, uh, uh, right-of-way line for, uh, Ogden Park Drive.
Well, the prior document from two thousand states that we granted them previously a ten-foot easement onto our property. If you go back to the two thousand document granting them an easement, and then if you look at these lines, they sort of continue on that same line, actually cut in a little bit. So, I mean, I'd have to assume that they're taking a ten-foot easement based on previous agreements and then the continuation of the line.
If that be the case, that's still out in the right-of-way for the hot, for the street, for Ogden Road. If you look at where the boundary lines for, the boundary of, uh, Ogden Park Drive is, if you look at the, uh, I guess it's the southern boundary of this, uh, easement, it's right on the line of the, uh, of Ogden Park Road. And I mean, you know, if we, if, if the concern is building a fence, so, you know, we go, we go back a couple of feet and build a fence. I mean, you know, I, I don't see that this, this easement constitutes a problem for us.
Well, my, my contention is, again, that we're here to represent the interest of New Hanover County schools, not the interest of the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority. And I don't think we should subvert their interests or contravene their interests, but I think that, again, a fence, which the posts would come nowhere near their water pipes, would not be an impediment to their proper or, you know, particular use of that land to run water pipes. And so I think that, you know, they're the ones who are being overly restrictive, and I think we should ask them, should we want to use our property? Otherwise, why don't we just grant them the property and let them, you know, worry about it? Because we can't use any of it for any purpose whatsoever if we grant the easement.
Ms. Hens, do you foresee in the future that we could have a problem there as far as a fence or anything like that? Because I'm having trouble with my map seeing exactly how far out. It seems to me it would have to be quite a ways out.
Well, you can, you know, we, based on the wording in the easement, the, Dr. Hickey's correct, we would be restricted from putting something on the easement. But as Mr. Higgins said, we could go just behind the easement and put something in place. Or we could talk with them again. You could table it, and we could go and have a discussion with them. We could make modifications to the language in the, uh, in the easement to allow us to go in there. We would have to be careful, of course, and not, you know, put something that would obstruct the water lines or would rupture a water line if we just chose to do something like that. If you wanted to put in vehicular, uh, vehicular protective measures for the building itself, for the, for the campus, to prevent vehicles from, uh, encroaching on the campus, except in designated.
Well, and you have, actually. You, I don't know who did it. I suspect it was your department, but they ran a bunch of posts along the side entrances.
We did.
Yeah, so you, so you've put things like, I'm foreseeing maybe wanting to put in front in the school already to limit vehicular access.
We have. We've, we've, we've limited that to control it. It doesn't prevent, those are just wooden posts and things. They don't prevent it. They're not like, they're not like, um, uh, security ballards or something of that nature that you prevent a vehicle from driving up there. But they're to control it and to prevent people who are following the regulations from doing it.
To Dr. Higgins' point, though, you know, um, I'm ver- I'm very familiar with that particular piece of property, and, and all you've done is basically forced, um, parents to go around and come in on this easement that we're discussing. Um, and so, you know, it's very possible that at some point, and, and we're also right, you know, backed up to the soccer fields and, and traffic, and, and cars parking on the property is, is a problem. So at some point, this, you know, down the road, I could see in the, in, you know, the foreseeable future, the possibility of putting up something to prohibit cars from, uh, or people from parking or driving on the property itself. So, you know, I, I can see that point.
You are very smart. I always tell you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just point out, the easement does allow the school system to use the easement area for certain limited purposes, including constructing, maintaining, and using the easement area for gravel, for, excuse me, paved gravel or dirt rights-of-way, drives, parking areas, drainage, buffer areas, and allows you to plant and maintain shallow-rooted ground cover material. It does not allow you to build a fence. Dr. Hickey's correct about that.
But all the other things would be taken care of and.
Are specifically allowed under the agreement.
We could put gravel. This is what they put down when they remediate.
Where are we?
Well, we have a motion in a second.
And Dr. Hickey, um, made a motion to table it.
That's three, you also had a motion to, from Mr. Higgins as well.
Yeah, we have a first and second.
Well, let's just go ahead, then. We had a motion in a second, because I think, does that, what Mr. Bullard just read, address the concerns that you had, Dr. Hickey, as far as?
Well, no, he just said what I have said, that we can't do anything with the property except put shallow ground cover, also known as grass or weeds. Or we can sprinkle, you know, the remainder of pavement, which is what they've done in the front of the school. Gravel.
But I don't see how that would alter the, the agreement with them as far as the right-of-way. Uh, I think the main concern is, was a fence.
Well, I would, I would like the ability to put things, because it's our property. I mean, we're, right now, it's our property, and we can do anything we want with our property. And we have, we do have, per our security audit, legitimate security concerns at all of our buildings. And, you know, as Mr. Hens talked about, some of the recommended things were security ballards or potentially fencing or, or shrubberies or, or things that would deter people from going in certain places that we don't want them. So we have a legitimate, potential legitimate need to use this property. If we go ahead and grant them the easement they're asking for, then, Mr. Higgins is right, we could move back a couple of feet on our property if we determined we want to do that, but, but it's our property now. We can do what we want with it. Why are we relinquishing our property? And if we are, why don't we just transfer the property to them? Because we can no longer use it for any purpose, based on this easement.
They were also paying a fee, were they not, Mr. Hens, around nine thousand dollars?
Just over?
Yes. Yes, they are.
And that was a one-time?
Yes. One-time fee, nine thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Is that unusual that, that they don't pay a fee like that?
No, we, we've gotten fees before for easements, the value of the easement.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we just go?
May I ask one more question? Uh, if we've gotten fees before, do you have the easement appraised? Or how do you come, how do you come to an agreement regarding what it's worth?
Well, the value of the, just the value of the, of the strip of property that they're taking is, is analyzed, and we did come up with the fee.
Is, is an actual appraisal that is done on it, or?
I don't know. I can find out and get, and get you that information.
I, we have a motion to approve the easement, and it was a second, correct? And now you're amending the motion, Dr. Hickey, to?
Table it.
Table it. Okay, the, uh, we'll vote first on the amended motion to table. All those, wait, did, was there a second to not?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that passes. Now the motion is that we will vote to table. Your motion is to table this until these things get, uh.
Some more.
I, I thought it was the opposite. I thought you voted on the amendment first.
About to table.
Yeah, you, you vote on that, and then you vote on the amended motion.
That's what we're doing. That's what I meant to say.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so now we're voting on the amended motion.
If his motion passed to table it, you don't have to vote on the other one.
No, to table?
That's what he, that's what she's saying. His motion was to table.
Right.
If that passes, then the other motion is dead.
But another motion ought to have been made.
But we voted on the amended one first, right?
You voted on the amended one first, and then if it passes, then his motion to table then takes precedence, and there's no reason to vote because it's now tabled.
Okay. So we voted, then?
Motion's tabled.
Okay.
We come back off and, uh, pick up the motion where it was tabled from.
You agree with all that, Mr. Bullard, with aye?
I think the end result is that it's tabled. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
It's a little bit like the Syria discussion.
At one time, in years past, we had a, um, a sheet of paper that gave the main motions and what was, what was to be done first. And each board member had that at their seat. I, I suggest we do that in the future, um, because oftentimes, we don't use a motion to table or whatever. For us to know what takes precedent and how to effectively go through the motions would be helpful.
You wouldn't by any chance have that sheet of paper with you?
I do not, but, um.
Ms. Adams?
Lois Salir.
It would be for the chair to have, because you're the one who has the rule.
Ms. Adams has it, so we'll, we'll have it. Okay, uh, item E, virtual image technology contract. Appendix H, Mr. Hens.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. This is, um, this is a, uh, contract to, uh, digitize and create microfiche of the student records which are currently in the basement of Lakeside. And so we would request that the board approve it at this time, and this is only for the records that are in Lakeside. The proposal, um, that Mr. Spencer received from the company, uh, indicated, um, prices for records that we have stored in other locations as well. However, we would ask that the board approve for this particular purpose, the seventy thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the records that are currently in the basement of Lakeside only.
Move for approval?
Second.
And this would take care of all of those over there now, except for those that remain for five years in the individual high schools, correct?
There are still records.
Is this the only story you cite that we have? Is this the only store you cite that we have?
These are currently in the basement of Lakeside.
Right.
We have records stored in other locations, in the Pebble Storage Buildings that are out back. We have some in the Chaw Nutrition Warehouse. We have records that are stored at the individual schools. This only addresses the records that are currently stored, the file cabinets of old records currently stored in the basement of Lakeside. We want to get those out of there as soon as we possibly can. We will address the others at a different time.
But the state doesn't give us any guidance as far as length of time that we can hold those before we do what we're getting ready to do now?
No, this is approved by the state for us to, for us to convert them to microfiche.
Well, I know that, but what I'm saying is, do they give us the time? Because those have been, I found mine over there.
Right. Now, these are, we have to keep the records.
After a certain amount of time, you can either have the paper record or the electronic record.
I would say, as long as you have the paper record, you're okay.
Well, you're allowed to convert the older ones to electronic format.
We have significant storage issues, that's why we want to convert these to microfiche and to digitize them at the same time.
Once we do, Don, we will pull yours.
I want to keep mine, I don't want, I want to see it shredded. All right, any other time, it's questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item F, design consultant agreement for Noble Middle School, Phase II HVAC improvements, appendix I, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request the board approve the design consultant agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item G, design consultant agreement for John T. Hogard High School, Phase II B HVAC improvements, appendix J, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that the board approve the design consultant agreement for Hogard.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item H, design consultant agreement for Myrtle Grove Middle School, HVAC improvements, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that the board approve the design consultant agreement for Myrtle Grove.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item I, design consultant agreement for E.A. Laney High School Roof Replacement, appendix L, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that the board approve the design consultant agreement for the roof replacements at Laney.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions, Mr. Higgins?
No, not look this way.
I've decided that roofs are going to be the bane of my legacy forevermore. You know, I've been on this board long enough that roofs that we've repaired the first year I was here are probably about ready to come up for repair again. So, yeah, I have decided I will just trust that Mr. Hance is not repairing roofs that were repaired after I was elected to this board. That was always my concern with Myrtle, I think it was Myrtle Grove, that 10 years after we put them on, then we had a problem with them. And, you know, that's the only thing that ever concerns me is that we're not getting there when we don't get the life out of a roof that we ought to get. I know roofs need to be replaced, I'm, you know...
Any other comments or questions?
I have one sort of general comment, it's the same comment I make all the time, about how much we pay these design consultants. But I noticed, looking through these, that the percentage is kind of all over the place. The first one was 8%, second one was 7.75%, the third one was 8.25%. This one is 9%. There's a roof, there's an H-back.
It varies with the estimated construction value. It's based on the construction value, so, and to get them enough money, it's a negotiated fee. And so we negotiate with them to be able to do the work for the amount. And it will, and as you'll, if you'll notice, that the fee will go down as the price goes up. As the price, the value of the construction usually goes up.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah, and that's typically what it is, and it's negotiated.
This is a bid process?
I'm sorry?
This is, these are all bid out, correct?
Yes, these will be bid. The bid, if you'll, notice in your packet, you have some anticipated... You have some anticipated bid dates for the projects. But these are not, these, for the consultants, are not bid.
Oh, these are just negotiated?
Yes, these are negotiated, these are negotiated fees, yes.
If I may clarify, you have qualification-based bidding, not price bidding. The statute prohibits a public entity from forcing designers to compete against each other by price. It says you have to submit proposals and select what you think is the most qualified, and then you can negotiate the price with that person. But that's what the statute says. You cannot take the lowest bid.
Mr. Hance will tell you, I plowed that ground before all of you.
You're not required to take the lowest bid.
Yeah.
That's amazing. So it prohibits us from making people bid for their services?
For professional services.
For architects and engineers, yes, sir.
Yes. Now, the actual work that is done is bid out. And you'll see in your packet the anticipated bid dates for each, for each one of these.
Sounds like something we need to go to the General Assembly about.
So I was gonna say, is that state law?
Yes, state statute.
I'm saying, we as a board just say, we're not gonna pay more than 8% and, you know, don't do business in New Hanover County.
Well, we try to make it a win-win situation where we give them enough fee for them to perform the work diligently, so that we don't get into a situation where we have negotiated with them and they don't have enough to do the work or either it's a shoddy job, once we get the work. So we try to keep it as an industry standard, based on the amount of work and the scope of work and the magnitude of the work, or at least the complexity of the work that is to be done. We try to give them a fair fee. And Mr. Anderson is very diligent in negotiation.
Well, I looked at some of the fair fees, and I think the principal was getting $195 an hour. Then I guess my question would be, could he maybe take $180 an hour? Would that be fair? And could we use, you know, because that would be a certain percentage. And on a big project, as you pointed out, that small percentage would be hundreds of, 50,000, $100,000.
Depends on how much he's going to be involved in the process, too.
I understand, but my point is, I want to be fair to them, I also want to be fair to our students, and not say that we can't have JV lacrosse or JV tennis because we don't have the money because, you know, we want to be fair to the design profession. You understand.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item J, local options for alternative schools, appendix M, Dale Pelsey-Bacton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I request approval of the local options.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item K, Amplify Contract, appendix N, Dale Pelsey-Bacton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, request approval of the Amplify application.
Move for approval.
Education Inc.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item L, Community Development Institute Head Start Contract Renewal, appendix O, Dale Pelsey-Bacton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, request approval of the Community Development Institute contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Do we have any more guidance as to when we're gonna hear something about Head Start?
We thought we were gonna hear last week.
Okay.
And then when our government went the direction it was going in, we had a feeling we would not know anything anytime soon until the decision is made.
Okay.
The government's closed, so, you know.
Say what?
Government's closed.
Oh, well, good for them. Can't get us in any trouble then.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item M, Castle Learning Renewal Soul Source Resolution, appendix P, Dawn Brinson.
Request that the board approve the Castle Learning Renewal Soul Source Resolution.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item N, Cabling for Myrtle Grove Middle School, appendix Q, Dawn Brinson.
Request that the board approve the cabling contract for Myrtle Grove Middle School.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item O, North Carolina School Boards Association Voting Delegates, appendix R, my name is there, we, I don't know how many are planning, it's good to see a show of hands, how many are planning on attending the school board conference in November in Greensboro? Are they, they call it the President's Conference?
Mm-mm, it's not the President's.
It's not the President's?
It's the State School Board Association.
I thought they called it the President's Conference.
That's a separate one.
What's the date?
The 44th Annual Conference, November 18.
What, they used to call it the President's Conference?
That was a separate one.
Didn't it, Mr. Higgins? You and I would know that.
I just thought it was the school board conference.
The President's was a separate one.
But the one in November, Corey Convention Center.
Yeah, I know which one it's called.
The State School Boards, November...
17, 18, something like that.
Yeah. How many delegates do we have?
Four. We're entitled for four delegates.
Do we have to vote on them, or can you just appoint them?
Generally, if we have four that goes, they're...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If you're going, you're voting.
I think it's 18th, 19th, and 20th.
It is.
Is that right?
That's correct.
18th, 19th, and 20th of November. But I'm planning on attending, I didn't go last year. I ran up one day because our student from Laney High School won that award, and I wanted to be there. I think you attended, Mr. Higgins.
I was the only one.
Yeah. But you can just let me know, we're entitled to have four delegates, four voting delegates.
Can I ask a related question about State School Boards Association? Did y'all get a letter from a gentleman who was upset because State School Boards Association has presumably started a political arm in order to lobby against gun violence?
It was the political arm that he was upset about. I don't really got to think about the guns, I've never heard of it.
Yeah, the School Boards Association sent out a notice that they weren't anywhere involved in a gunfight.
I think that was just a comment someone made, that someone picked up on and said that organization was something based upon what LeAnn Winner, their lobbyists, had said at one of the district meetings. I don't know if it's taken out of context what it was, but I didn't hear anything like that at our district meeting that we attended.
She did not say anything when we were sitting in the session.
There was nothing to that effect. But if you're planning on going, let me know, and because we're entitled to four delegates, so. If, and actually, I'm planning on going, so I'll be a delegate, three others.
I will not, I will not.
Okay. But let me know, and then we'll, do we send those names in, Ms. Adams? Okay. Just let me know, and we'll have Ms. Adams send those in to the state. Item P, North Carolina School Boards Association Training Credit, appendix S. You received the work sessions that we've had, and Ms. Adams sent that out for us to send in to receive credit.
Did that also include the Common Core Conference?
Yes.
Okay.
It, I believe I read that, it was the last thing on the, yeah. So it should be up to date, all the hours on there. So we'll need a motion to approve those.
So moved?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
They are approved. Item Q, New Hanover County Schools Fee Schedule, appendix T, Dr. Hickey.
Okay, I think I'll start this one, and then I'll hand it over to Lisa because she had some questions as well. This came to me from some user groups. In particular, it came to me from Cape Fear Soccer. And as you know, they're very involved in our schools. They actually put on a couple of programs for the Title I schools. But in any case, the majority of our schools, school fields are scheduled through the county. And industry, well, Mr. Hance, give me a face, but most, a lot of them are scheduled by the county. And he gave us the list of these, and I think the list is here as well. When these fields are scheduled through the county, there is no fee associated with their use to either the soccer clubs, whether it's Cape Fear, Port City, or the Lacrosse Association, or I guess the baseball associations. There are some other schools, and this came to me, one of the teams, I guess, decided they would use Alderman. They didn't know that they couldn't use Alderman, just, so some soccer coach took it upon himself to go out to Alderman and have a recreation soccer practice. And he was quick, I guess there was another group out there as well, and then there was an argument about who had the right to use the field. And they were then informed that there were, there was a fee associated with Alderman. And so when this came to me, I thought, really? I thought all our fields were, again, and this was my ignorance, I thought all our fields were scheduled for the county, and I knew that the county did not charge a fee. And so I asked Mr. Hance about this, and you all saw some of the email exchanges just getting some information. And I'd spoken to several board members, and it was at least my opinion, and I think some of the board members shared that opinion, that these school parks, these school facilities are already bought and paid for by the taxpayers. And in many cases, these are the students attending those schools, which are, of course, our students. And we have an interest in having them be physically active. So I didn't feel like it was the board's intent to put on extra burdens to prevent these children from being active. And so I'd asked Mr. Hayes and Ms. Nichols what the best way was to bring this up as an action item, to look at not charging fees to certain tax-exempt user groups, and I don't know how we're gonna determine that, but at least for use of our fields. And I think, I'll leave that off with Ms. Eastep, I think you had a question as well regarding some of this.
Well, and I think I sent an email about this to the board. One of the young men that we did a, well, the young man that we did a profile on last year, Justin Burzall, in 2009 started a wheelchair hockey league, which I believe he talked about in the video. There is nothing like it in the county or in North Carolina. There is no other equivalent program for people with disabilities who are in wheelchairs for physical activity. They had been using Hogard kind of on an informal basis, but it was difficult because of the leadership changes over there. Sometimes they were allowed, sometimes they weren't allowed to use the gym. They, Hogard is the location that they prefer because of the accessibility of the bus stop. Some of their participants use the bus. So Hogard is, it's centralized, the bus is very easy, the bus stop is very easy to get to, it's easy to get to the gym. What they are asking for is access to the gym for two hours once a month. Now, if they were to, this is a 501(c)(3), they don't have a lot of funding. You know, it's been put on by basically a high school student. And, you know, these are people with disabilities that, a lot of them, I think, are not, do not have steady jobs. And they're riding, you know, the city bus. For us to grant them access to the gym for two hours, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hance, it was a $100 fee for two hours plus $35 an hour for custodial, custodial fee. This is not something that they can afford, because they provide, they, with the funds that they get, they provide uniforms and other equipment to their participants. I've actually just gotten an email or a letter that I have forwarded to the board and Dr. Markley and whoever, I can forward it to anyone, about it, about the situation. I would like to see if we could work with them, because they have, they have a mentor team in, I think it's Philadelphia. They pay a flat fee, the mentor team pays a flat fee, a flat fee to the school system of $10 for each use. But they would not be able to, they would not be able to afford the, what is that, $170? They do have teachers and other administrative staff at Hogard who would be willing to be the monitors if that's what the problem is. But I don't know if there's a way that we can work around this to make it affordable for a group like this. I mean, it would break my heart to think that they couldn't. I mean, they're asking for two hours a month. $170 for two hours a month seems ridiculous, especially for something that, they don't have this anywhere. So this is the only thing that these people can do, that these, you know, these people who are in wheelchairs to do. And I would like to make it happen.
Ms. Calhoun?
I think it's a very worthwhile effort for, to support this. But since there are a number of organizations, and I would like to see everyone treated fairly, I recommend highly that the Chair and Dr. Hickey, since you are both on the Rex Board and you are knowledgeable about our school system, that the two of you sit down with our staff and come up with some suggestions of who would pay, who wouldn't pay, under what circumstances. And that way, we're not just piecemeal approving one person at this meeting, another person at the other meeting. I think that it is time for us to consider changing the method by which we supply our resources, supply the locations that will be much more friendly to our constituencies and much more fair.
Dr. Hickey, I know that, of course, not Hickey... Dr. Hickey, I, I know that, of course, Dr. Hickey's no longer on the, I think it's called Clarkson Garden now, but he was on there, so he's certainly knowledgeable of, of what you, you speak, plus we also, Dr. Hickey and I are on the Legion Stadium Commission, so we also work with the city.
I think you do a good job on coming up with a plan.
And I think it's a good suggestion, Dr. Hickey, would you be willing, 'cause you, you know, Ms. Eastep, you make a good point, and there are other groups out there that have contacted me that, that are nonprofit groups, that also have, you know, needs for facilities, so there, I would like to think there is some way that, 'cause you're right, a hundred, and then you double in the custodial at thirty-five an hour.
And when you talk about equivalent programs for, for those with physical and intellectual disabilities, we have nothing in the school systems. We do offer soccer, we do offer basketball, we don't offer anything for our kids with disabilities, so to me, it, it's especially imperative for a group like this, 'cause we have nothing, we haven't, we haven't, and, and Christian says it in her letter, we haven't given a dollar to do this, to develop any sort of programming.
Well, I certainly think it's the, the will of this board, at least the people I've spoken to, and I think all of you, that we make our schools more accessible to the people in the community, and we, we should, in Lisa's case, look for more innovative ways to get the cost down, again, because if there's a will of the board to make things more accessible, then we can find ways to make it happen, as opposed to, you know, laying down strict guidelines and making things prohibitive, which is kind of the way it is now, so I'd be happy to, to serve on such a, a committee. I would just ask, you know, not to be completely, well, the reason I brought this forward particularly was for the, the soccer groups, but I think, well, I guess we could do it as an action item later, you know, I, I frankly don't understand, again, there are certain things that have to be done when we use inside facilities, you know, to, to Lisa's point, there has to be a monitor, there has to be someone to let people in, let people out, we have to make sure the schools aren't vandalized. I, I don't understand why there are fees associated with use of a outdoor soccer field, when we don't charge the county for the use of renting those out, so, you know, would the board consider changing that fee schedule for the outdoor fields for the, I don't know which?
Well, I think that's something you and I, if, if we could work out, get with Mr. Hans, and look at that, because also, and Ms. Eastep, the, the Hot Wheels group, do they, I think it's by all, and correct me, Mr. Board, that the liability part, we must require that a group uses...
They have liability insurance.
Okay, we'll see. Actually, to me, it's the most, I've had some groups that, that are very upset about that, but I told them, I said, well, legally, I just don't think we have much choice, yeah, the other thing, we certainly, I think, can be flexible in what we look at, and I'd be willing, Dr. Hickey, is anyone else, we'll make it three if you'd like.
I'll do it.
Okay, but Ms. Eastep, Dr. Hickey and I will...
Is there a reason that the county hasn't scheduled these particular fields, as opposed to the remainder of our fields?
They only schedule, as, as you indicated, some of our fields, they typically do not want any of our elementary fields, they only want our high school and middle school fields, that, that's typically what they want to schedule, because they, they do that, and we have, we have trouble on a regular basis with our teams, our school teams, having to be off the fields by six, by six o'clock, so that recreational leagues can, can come onto the fields, so that's something that we're trying to work through with the county, with the fields that they, that they control. They used to control, for instance, Bradley Creek, when there was a soccer league that regularly practiced over there, and played over there, and they've since told us they don't want to, they don't want to do that anymore, so typically, they're moving to our middle schools and our high schools are the ones that they really, they really want. I don't know that there's an elementary, elementary school, except for the lease we have with the soccer fields out by Eaton, which the county developed with the additional land that we have out there. That's probably the only elementary school besides Bradley Creek that they control, except for the Blair Noble complex with, that they have up there, so, which they've had for years. Actually, they were going to cease controlling that and wanted us to control it, and we said, we have no use for it, we will tear the facilities down, and they started controlling it again.
Well, I know, I mean, I have been by Alderman on numerous occasions, I mean, basically, those people are just out in the playground, I mean, you know, they've got little cones set up, and they're out there kicking the ball around, and look like they're practicing and stuff, I mean, you know, I don't see why, I, I agree on that point with Dr. Hickey, that, you know, there's no reason to charge somebody to use the playground. Now, what I did hear, however, was that apparently two people showed up at the same time, and that can become something of an, an issue that, you know...
No, two separate, two separate things, one is scheduling, and the second is cost.
Yeah, well, that is what I'm getting at, I mean, I don't have any problem with, with some, some degree of scheduling.
No, neither.
But I, I do agree, I mean, especially with the elementary schools, unless it's a, it's a formal facility that we maintain, and, you know, such as a soccer field, I don't know if any of the elementary schools have a formal soccer field or not, but if, if they did, and it's being kept and limed, and, you know, marked off or anything like that, I could understand why we might would charge something, but I mean, if we're just talking about people going out on the, what in essence is the playground, where there's some grass, and, and even if they're having a game or something, I don't see any, any, any reason to be charging people for doing that.
We had, in twelve, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, there were a little over nine thousand people that used our fields, thirty-six thousand used our inside facilities.
I'm not talking about the inside, I'm talking about just the...
And nine, nine thousand used our, used our fields.
But are those with the, that's the formal fields, or just fields in general?
All of our, all outside spaces, which included, which, which includes, you know, outside play areas at the, at the elementary schools, as well as some of our, our formal fields. The only problem I know of that we've had, as far as the field being torn up, was the Ogden Elementary Field, there was an adult soccer league using it, and they tore it up, and we had to spend almost five thousand dollars repairing that, that we probably wouldn't have now, how, is it, did the elementary kids tear it up, or did the soccer people tear it up? There's wear and tear, and it all, you know, it probably had to be repaired at an early, at an earlier time period.
But was that, I mean, is that a, is that a legitimate field? I mean, is that a, they just were out, I mean, in other words, they...
It's just like, it's just like Alderman, it's just a play area, the play area at Ogden, but it's...
How do you tear it up, then? How do you tear it up? I mean, you know...
With cleats.
Well, it might have been rainy, it might have been wet.
And it was just torn, but we resaw it and did good things.
Particularly if you've got gold out the areas in front of the gold.
Right, those kind of things.
But my point is, what we're talking about is recreational soccer for little kids, we're talking, you know, six-year-olds and seven-year-olds who want a place to practice soccer. I think it's, I think the board has an interest in promoting that, as opposed to preventing it.
And we have, and as Dr. Hickey alluded to...
They all do, yeah.
Scheduling is, is a, is an issue, because we've had people that have just, and lots of groups, organized groups, for youth and for adults, just show up on our fields and just use it, they don't give us the insurance, they don't schedule it with us, they don't sign the contract, they just show up and use it, and then when we have someone who has followed the procedures, signed a contract, provided the insurance, and they show up, and then we've had a conflict like that. So Dr. Hickey is absolutely correct, scheduling is going to be essential, because we first have to ask the school, if the school, if you're at an elementary school, and they're having a choral concert that night, and all of a sudden, somebody shows up in an adult league or a youth league that's out on the field, you very well could have a major parking issue there at the school, where the choral group for the school can't get in and use the parking lot, some of our smaller elementary schools.
I agree, scheduling is something we have to address.
That's one of the first things we ask, is can the school accommodate the use? Ninety percent of the time, they can, and there's not an issue, sometimes there is a conflict, and they say, no, we can't, and we try, do you have an alternate location for the user group? So it's the board's fee schedule, which was set two thousand four, two thousand eight.
So it's my understanding, the three board members are going to get together as a committee, and they're gonna come back with recommendations to the full board?
Yes, move for approval.
Are we, are we able to, sorry, are we able to...
We'll waive the fees pending the outcome of the committee.
Okay, awesome, all right, so I can, I can tell Christian that, okay, great, and she just needs to get with who?
When are they gonna practice, though?
Well, I just actually sent her an email.
On a weekend or a weekday?
It would be a weekend, I suggested Sunday.
Well, see, that's what I require a custodian to come in, because no one will be there.
Well, the teacher...
That's not, that's not the fee, I mean, if somebody's, we'll waive the fees, but if we have to pay somebody to be there...
No, Tammy Pruden over at Hogard has agreed to come in, it's two hours a month, I'll go in, I don't care, I'll go borrow someone's wheelchair and play, it sounds like fun, actually, you know?
I'll come watch if you do that, then.
Yeah, I'm awful.
Cheerleader.
But...
That's like Hispanic.
Yeah, 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 I could be goalie, but yeah, no, Tammy and I believe another teacher has also agreed to, to serve as the monitor, so that's not an issue, so I just need to tell her to, who would I tell her to, to get up with, Bill, to schedule it?
We'll waive any fees, but if there are any costs with custodians and stuff, you got, they'll still be responsible for those costs.
Okay, no, it's my understanding that she already has two teachers on the hook, and, and then me, so...
Frankie Pollak.
She needs to get a hold of, and you've already given her that number?
Yes, yes, she already has that, and she can contact him to schedule, she'll have to sign a contract, provide us with the certificate of insurance.
Okay.
Now, let me, let me clarify what the board is directing me to do as far as our outside spaces, all of our outside spaces?
Granted, these, this is an indoor one, we're...
This is an indoor one.
Until we get...
But I heard, but I heard over here that for all of our outside spaces, we're not gonna charge any more fees for any groups, adult, youth, anything, for-profit, nonprofit...
The committee's gonna make that decision.
No decision, that doesn't...
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still going to charge fees until such time as the group comes back with recommendations, is that correct?
With the exception of the Hot Wheels.
With the exception of the Hot Wheels, is that...
Yes.
And I'll be in contact with you tomorrow, I'll meet with Dr. Hickey and Ms. Eastep, we'll see when we can get together, and we'll come see you, and then we'll put forth something to bring back to the board.
Like, is that one, that's one that's gotta move fairly quick, get that on the November agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
I heard a motion, do we need to vote on this, or we just agree that we're going to?
I think we're waiting for, until the committee meets and comes back to the board.
But I'll, I'll give you to a call, and, so that'll take care of item Q. I've been asked if we take a short, five-minute break before we move on to item R.